Welcome to the March 27, 2023 Selectment Meeting. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Adele Dombrowski passed away peacefully on March 20, 2023, at the age of 100. She and her husband moved to Abington in 1942 and raised their family here. She had a large family with four children, grandchildren and great-grandchildren, as well as many nieces and nephews and longtime friends. She worked as a seamstress in the garment industry for many years and proudly wore, proudly made uniforms and sea bags for the soldiers during World War II. She was one of the founding coordinators of the Council on Aging in Abington. She had many interests and was an avid bowler, loved music, dancing, the polka, singing, knitting, gardening, and playing bingo. She made many caring friends along the way. Adele was a family, the family historian. She will be greatly missed by all who knew and loved her. Thank you. With that, we're going to jump to number one. Do I have a motion for executive session?
Make the motion enter into executive session in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body in the chair. So it clears, the board will reconvene in open session.
Do I have a second?
I'll say.
And roll call, Mr. Hagerty.
Aye.
Kevin.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. We're now close for executive session. Come on back.
Thanks for coming early.
We are out of executive session, so we will move on with public comment. Mr. Hagerty.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of public announcements.
Of course you do.
Springtime is here, and the Abington compost site is opening back up for another amazing season, starting this Saturday, April 1st, that's no joke, April 1st, from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. The compost site, for those of Abington residents who aren't aware, is located at 171 Groveland Street. At the compost site, Abington residents can drop off yard waste, leaves, grass clippings, and scrap metal for free, plus obtain compost for free as well. Electronics and mattresses can be dropped off for recycling for a small fee. Types of electronics and mattresses accepted at the site and the cost to dispose of them can be found on the Abington Health Department website under Abington Trash. For any, for anyone who wants to donate electronics or...
It appears we are having technical difficulties.
You're okay. Just, you still be second on the battery here.
Oh, all right.
Okay.
All right, so for anyone who wants to donate...
You can hear it for yourself.
Yeah, I can, yeah, I can hear it for myself.
I believe it's his headset.
All right, thank you, Sean. For the, for the residents who want to get rid of electronics and mattresses, just checks only to town of Abington, no cash. For future references, the compost site for 2023 includes, so every Saturday from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., weather permitting, in April, May, June, July, August, September, October, and November, and then the last date being December 2nd. Again, this is all weather permitting. To our volunteers who work on the compost site, thank you for working the compost site. You always do a great job. And thank you to the Health Department and the Board of Health for making this possible. And lastly, a very, very important one, friendly reminder, be a part of local democracy at work. The annual Abington Town Meeting of 2023 will be held next Monday, April 3rd, at 7:00 p.m. in the Abington Middle School, Abington Middle High School Auditorium. All registered Abington voters are invited and encouraged to attend, so bring all your family and your friends. Your vote is needed to approve the town's $65.5 million FY '24 operating budget, authorize capital plan investments for school, roads, and parks, fund infrastructure improvement projects, amend our zoning bylaws, including to enhance the protection and preservation of mature trees to, to stormwater management goals. Move forward with a town planner, I'm really excited about that one, hopefully we can move that. Equip our police and fire departments, Washington Street Bike Lane and pedestrian improvements, authorize preservation restriction on Memorial Bridge at Island Grove, and many more. In order to conduct, to conduct the town's business, we need at least 150 registered Abington voters to be present at the town meeting. It's recommended to arrive at 6:45 or earlier in order for the town meeting to start promptly at 7:00 p.m. Please join us on April 3rd for the Abington Annual Town Meeting of 2023. It's always a great time to be a part of local government at work, so make sure you get out to the town meeting next Monday. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hagerty. Kevin.
Yes, All-Star, all-scholastic Senior Captain Jake Quinn, I just want to bring up, last Tuesday, March 21st, at the Bruins game, he was given the MIAA Sportsmanship Award. He is a winner. There was a group of athletes there from all different high schools and towns. I was at the game, I think you were there as well, Alex. It was a great presentation, it was really cool to see. Again, this is Jake Quinn. He just exemplifies the sportsmanship award. Just for example, there were parents on a few occasions of injured opponents, their parents that reached out about his leadership and Jake's leadership, so really appreciate it. He is a phenomenal athlete, there's a ton of him on that hockey team as well, but I just want to give a congratulations to Jake Quinn and an indulgence.
Tim.
Nothing, sir.
Mike.
Just a quick thank you to all the volunteers, parents, students that came out to clean up the ballfields around town. It was noticed and appreciated.
I have a couple, just call me Alex. But first of all, Alex Leary on the Conservation Commission, who recently received his certification from the Massachusetts Association of Conservation Commissions, we want to congratulate him. And Alex Hagerty mentioned the planner, and I think at the last meeting I said, "In a perfect world, we could hire a planner." Well, apparently we have a perfect world. Thank you to our town manager and the Finance Committee for coming up with the plan that we can finally hire a planner that's very well needed in this town. And we just came out of executive session, and we voted to approve the police, fire, and library contracts. The police and library vote was five to nothing in favor, and the fire contract was four yes and one abstention. So this brings us right in line and exceeds some of the other surrounding towns. Very good contract, I think, for all three, especially the, the police that's been lacking for many years, so I'm very happy with it. The contract will be up on the website for anyone to see shortly, so that's all I have. The public appointment at 6:35 has been postponed till the next meeting, we assume. Number one, we did vote to, and we voted to ratify the police and fire and library contracts. I'll take a motion to approve the minutes from March 13th.
Make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Request to consider the town, the town-appointed tenant board member seat of Abington Housing Authority, Donna Green. Is Donna Green here? Okay. Scott, why don't you explain to our listeners at home what this is?
I really don't have an explanation for you, sir.
Okay.
I mean, it comes up, and I believe it has come up one other time, that there are, there is a, a seat for tenant...
On the Housing Authority.
...of Housing Authority to be on that board. That seat went vacant, so it just comes up for us to post it, which we did, and we had to post it for the statutory amount of time, and now you can make that decision.
Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, I want to read an email that we received from the Chair of the Abington Housing Authority, Ellen Delaney. Dear Mr. Limbiasi and the Honorable Board of Selectmen, Donna B. Green has applied for the town-appointed tenant board member seat with the Abington Housing Authority. Donna is a current act, a current active tenant in our house, in our senior housing community, and in my opinion, she would be a great addition to our board. I highly recommend that she be appointed to the position.
Make a motion to appoint Donna B. Green to the tenant board member seat of the Abington Housing Authority.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, unanimous, thank you. Request to appoint Alex Hagerty, oh, I'm sorry, number five, sorry, Alex.
Sorry.
Request to appoint Peter Walters and Nora...
Acevito.
Acevito?
Acevito?
To the op...
Acevito?
Acevito, to the opioid settlement fund allocation committee. As many of you may know, we formed this committee to disperse the opioid money we're receiving from the settlements that the Attorney General and others have got on our behalf, and the money comes in yearly, some of it more than once a year, depending who, there's lots of different settlements we're getting, and if you remember a while ago, we had Scott sign up for any that we're eligible for. So we have about $106,000 in our hands right now, and we formed the committee. The committee has met twice, and we're getting organized, and we will be meeting on the second and fourth Mondays. So these two applicants have asked to join, and as with everyone on the board, as we discussed, everyone will be a one-year appointment, and in June of '24, when we do all the appointments, then we would split this up into one, two, and three-year terms going forward, if you see fit to do so. So would someone like to make a motion?
Make the motion to appoint Peter Walters and Nora Acevito to the opioid settlement fund allocation committee.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Now, request to appoint Alex Hagerty to the Historical Committee, Commission.
Can we hear from Alex?
Speech. Are you really asking?
No.
No, 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 no. I'll make the motion.
Let him on.
No, I, before you do have this vote, I just want to say a huge shout-out to the Abington Historical Commission. They have been meeting regularly now, and really, working really great to, to work on the historical properties that we have in town, try to find historical properties and create new projects, so hats off to the Historical Commission.
I'll make a motion to appoint Alex Hagerty to the Historical Commission.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, unanimous, Alex. Number seven, discussion with South Shore Regional Vocational School District Representative regarding article to amend regional agreement to accept the town of Marshfield as a new member. Do we have someone here?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. My name's Tom Hickey, I'm the school superintendent, and tonight I'm joined by your representative to our school committee, Tom Petrazelli. Thanks for, thanks for fitting us in before town meeting, I appreciate it. We were able to send along some information earlier, in, earlier this winter regarding the change to our regional agreement. The reason that we're amending the agreement, as the Chair read, is that we're looking to admit the town of Marshfield to be a member community. As you, as you probably know, South Shore has recently entered the MSBA pipeline for new or renovated school. It's something that, as you know, takes a long time. We think that the timing of adding another community will assist all of our existing communities in cost-sharing for this new, for this new building. But for the moment, the purpose of, of my coming here tonight is to tell you what exactly is changing in the regional agreement from where we last amended it in 2018. The biggest changes involve the, the admission of Marshfield into the district. When we worked out some terms and conditions with Marshfield, we focused on two areas, both financial. The first was that we would expect Marshall to pay a proportional share of our existing stabilization fund, and the primary use of that fund in, in putting money into it for the last seven years has been to hopefully get invited into the MSBA pipeline, essentially to help us cover feasibility costs. With your support, seven or eight years ago, we started that process, and we were able to, we were able to show the MSBA that we had the financial means without having to spike assessments when we were accepted a year ago, so we, we accomplished that goal. So we looked at some enrollment projections, and so Marshall will pay approximately $400,000 over a 10-year period to essentially bring them up to a proportional share of what the existing eight communities have paid. The second financial issue, even more important than that, quite honestly, is to work out a formula that would fairly spread out the cost of any future debt project. The way our regional agreement works is that when our school board votes to incur debt, we do a three-year lookback on enrollment, and it's likely that the school board, if everything goes to plan, will be taking a vote on a preferred design somewhere in the middle of 2024, so probably early fiscal '25. And so when we do a three-year lookback and we look at the enrollments of all of our communities, if Marshall does join, their first year of, of admission would be fiscal '25. They would have an artificially low number of students in the building, having only recruited one year. So we worked out language that's in our regional agreement that essentially says, "Marshfield will pay a share of the debt that is in proportion to their enrollment, adjusted annually for the first four years, and then after they complete five fiscal years in the district, that we will have essentially recruited at least a grade nine through grade 12 group of students. Then we'll take a look at their enrollment, and that number, when we look at the October 1, 2028 figures, that will become a fixed debt share." This is important to our existing communities, because when we do come to the voters and ask for their support, we have to, of course, tell the voters, "What's our share of this project?" Now, this is very early in the process, we're going to hire a designer in a few months, so we're, we're a ways out, but we're going to be bringing numbers to our communities where we'll, we're, we will be saying to them, "By the time we get to planning for the fiscal 2030 budget, we will have an increased debt share on the part of Marshfield." My anticipation, looking at projected enrollment, Marshall could be anywhere from 17% to 20% of, of the district, so therefore, they, they would be 17% to 20% of any future debt share. That was the biggest reason that we are amending this agreement. The Department of Education's legal department looked at the agreement before we brought it to any of our communities. We made a few other changes that I would say are substantive, but not to the level of, of the details of Marshfield joining the district. I'd be happy to go into those as well, but they, most of the changes were ornamental, there were a few other changes, but I'm more than happy to field a few questions or, or follow-up.
I have a couple. First of all, how many towns are currently in...
Eight.
Eight. And do the towns pay a fixed amount yearly, or is it per student?
It is a combination, it's a, the answer is, it's mostly the state formula, which determines the minimum contribution number. In fact, this current fiscal year, we're planning for about 85% of a town's assessment is the number we get from the governor, and we build it off of that. But when we talk about debt, or capital, or transportation, or any operating costs above the Chapter 70 formula, that's done purely on an enrollment basis, proportional enrollment. So it's a combination of, how many kids do you have in the district? That covers a portion of the assessment, and then the rest is based on the Chapter 70 Foundation Budget Formula.
And is it consistent usually with the towns with the amount of students?
I've been at the school since 1994. I would tell you that in the mid-'90s, we had more non-resident students that we've, and then, then there was a wave of non-resident students recently, some regulatory changes. I would say, from, from my own personal memory, that Abington and Rockland and Whitman are three communities who have been the largest share of the district. That has not changed substantially. What we are seeing in the last three years is an increase in enrollment from member communities who have historically not used all of their apportioned seats when we admit kids, so Hanover, I'm talking about Hanover, who has historically not used their seats, but last three years they have.
And how do you determine that, by the population of each town?
Precisely.
Yeah.
What we do is we start by determining how many students we'll be able to accept in a freshman class, and then we figure out numerator over denominator, we assign that percentage to each town. We admit students from the respective towns in what we would call Round One. When we have leftover seats, we go to a merged waiting list. So historically, we've had kids from Abington, Rockland, and Whitman largely populate that waiting list, and that's how we then continue to fill the seats.
I think Abington was like 17% or 20% last year, was its share.
Approximately, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, I guess my question, because my son went through this process and was waitlisted, subsequently did not get in. Other towns, like you, like you just mentioned, Hanover had an influx, and then Cohasset, was it Cohasset or Situate?
Situate.
Situate had an influx, towns that usually don't use their seats, now we're using their seats, and I think Keegan was 25 in the list for Abington.
Okay.
My question is, and I, my numbers escaped me, but I thought it was about 270 kids per grade you could fit into the school?
170.
170.
Yeah.
So it's a, it's a small number, split up over the towns. By adding another town now, how is that, is that detrimental to, does Abington lose seats? How do you do that now?
Yeah, that's an excellent legitimate question. So the math would be similar, we bring another, we, we bring another community in, we factor in their eighth grade enrollment, and we reapportion the seats. On paper, what that probably would mean is that our existing communities, depending on their enrollment, would probably see a haircut of between three or four seats per community. However, what we would also anticipate, at least right now, is that there will still be seats that go unfilled. The number of seats available will, would be lower. I, I would anticipate that Cohasset and Norwell, who have historically not filled all their seats, that would, that would continue. And when we get to the '28, '29 school year, which is when ideally we're ribbon-cutting on whatever we're doing, we will have a bigger school with more capacity. The MSBA has asked us to study an enrollment projection of anywhere from our existing 600, well, they said 645, we're about 650 right now, up to 805 without Marshfield, but with Marshfield, as much as 975. It's a huge increase of potential enrollment. I think the answer has got to be probably somewhere between those last two numbers. So to answer your question, I think in the short term, there will still be, there will still be additional seats available. So we're projecting that Abington's, Abington's quota or share is about 23, but my admissions counselor tells me that we'll probably end up accepting about 30 Abington students for this incoming ninth-grade class, using those, those seats that go unused by other communities.
And I guess the, the other factor to that is, so prior to this new school being built, Marshfield being in the mix, now those other communities don't use those seats, they will now be going also to Marshfield, so it's kind of a double factor. Our percentage is going down initially, and then the, the seats that are proportioned after the fact not filled are also going to be spread out by another town as well.
Depending on each year's waiting list, that's true, yes.
And how, how did it go on the waiting list for unfilled, for the seats that another town didn't fill? Was it by grades overall?
It was by the overall application score, so what we do is we merge them, so regardless of zip code, we would take the application scores and just take them, and take students from the top.
Okay.
Yeah.
So are students only allowed to apply in the freshman year?
No, no, thankfully, we've, we've been able to get that word out for a while, so we do admit students in, in upper grades. There's, there's nothing exclusive about grade nine, however, the vast majority of kids would come in grade nine, but we, we are regularly providing tours and admission to students in grade 10. The catch, as it always has been, is it depends if that child and that family are seeking a vocational program where we have space. If there's space, perfect match, students will get a fine education coming in in grade 10.
So a kid could apply just to the VOTAC with no specific...
In grade nine, yes. In fact, we tell families...
And I know this is a lot, that's not really what you're here for, but just for education.
Oh, I could do this all day long, no worries. No, this is important, I'm glad you're asking the questions, I appreciate you for the extended time. We have all students explore all of our 12 majors. They do that between September and December of their ninth-grade year.
Okay.
Then they get placed. For an upperclassman, it's really about, hey, what are you interested in? We have openings in these three programs. If it's a match, great, welcome, welcome aboard. Sometimes, however, if they want a program that's full...
It's not available.
Yeah.
Okay.
One last question, there's another town on the South Shore that has removed itself from a vocational program. There's a big push in that town, there's Facebook groups talking about this, I won't mention the town, obviously, but is there a cap for South Shore VOTAC? I mean, you're accepting Marshfield, this town comes talking or asking, and is there a cap?
Is there a cap in terms of number of towns?
Yeah.
No, I, I, no, there isn't, but, and I'm familiar with what you're, what you're, you're talking about.
Say that town comes tomorrow and wants to join...
That town has to form a regional planning committee, and they have to do so by getting a vote of their Board of Selectmen and school committee, or they can go to their springtown meeting. It's my understanding that the springtown meeting would likely take place. What I have, I have personally had some communications, and my personal opinion is that I wouldn't recommend any immediate action on that until we progress further in the MSBA process. We really need to see what we can afford. I don't think we're going to be able to afford a building for 975 students, but I think we could fill 975 if we had the space.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
No question about it. I just am not, I'm not convinced that that's affordable. So, we'll be a lot smarter a year from now, and a, a planning discussion process like we've had with Marshall has been, you know, taken over a year. So I see it as, we need more facts before we could, before I would recommend to our school committee or through their, their regional planning subcommittee, that we would bring on another community. I would want, what I've been saying is, we have to do the numbers, much like the questions you're asking about capacity and town share. If we end up with a lower total, let's say we have a new school and it's 825, well, we have to do the math, we have to figure how we could onboard another community, and if their share is such that it's actually reducing existing capacity, it's one thing to add one community when you might have 50 or 60 unassigned seats every year that get reapportioned, and they'll draw, they'll draw that down, but I think we get very close to the margins by, I think it's too hasty. So my, my personal opinion is, we have to wait a little bit to see, but having a conversation is not a problem.
And then historically, your unfilled seats per year, has, have you seen that increase, decrease? How has that been?
I've seen, up until the last three years, I've seen it pretty standard. The, the changes with interest from Hanover and Situate, I would say, prior to the last three years, I could give you the, almost the exact same answer, which is, Rockland, Abington, and Whitman would fill their allotment. The other communities would be either significantly under or just under, and then those three communities would likely fill the remaining seats. So I, I see that trending, I see a wait, I see a longer waitlist, but every year, we have a portion of students who we accept who ultimately would decline. So we're very, the, the admissions office does a very good job to be very prompt in getting people to say, "Are you in? That's great, we're going to check back with you. The minute a seat opens, we want to be able to tell another family that there's availability."
Yeah, and I will say that, too, they, they did tell me that, that we could get a call the last week of August for a seat, so...
Yes, yes. Even the first week of school, if we count the heads and say, "Hey, where is he?" We're, we're on the phone, we need to know, because other families are waiting.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions?
Well, yeah, did you say you take that, you started with South Shore VOTAC?
1994.
Yeah, but I mean, did you imagine in 1994 you'd be where you are today, as far as our school?
I'm a lucky man, and no, I didn't.
You've done an amazing job at that school.
Thank you, thanks.
My brother went there in the '90s, and it was a lot different than it is today, but...
Yeah, thanks.
It was good then, it's great now.
I went for adult education over there.
Yeah, and with some state, with some state support, we're, we're back post, post-pandemic, we're back to running some pretty robust night school programs, so, yeah. We don't turn the lights off at 3:00, that's good.
Good. Any other questions? Okay, so this is on the town meeting warrant?
Correct.
And you will be at town meeting?
I will.
Okay. All right, great.
The first of eight.
All right.
Thanks very much for your time, thank you.
Thank you.
Number eight, request for permission to use Island Grove for civil service camp...
Civil war.
Civil, civil...
Civil war.
Civil... Civil service, civil service. Yeah, we just had that discussion. Civil war camp for instruction for soldiers, April twenty-ninth and thirtieth, Paul Brundage. Would you like to come up and talk about it?
I just was here in case you had any questions.
Why don't you explain what you're gonna do?
Thank you, folks, for considering this, I appreciate it. Um, what we're looking to do is have a school of instruction for what's called cavalry. Um, it's, in the reenacting world, we have mounted cavalry, which is the group that I've been with, but we also have dismounted cavalry, which are guys that portray having horses, um, as part of, you know, their, their interpretation, but they don't actually have horses. So those of us that do, usually once a year, will bring these other groups out, and we'll teach them the very basics of horsemanship, whether it's picking hooves, uh, carrying, you know, uh, the fur, or putting saddles on, just basic instruction, but we feel that to put on a better, um, educational program, that these folks should have better education. So we're looking to arrive on Friday night, the twenty-ninth, um, stay there Saturday, I'm not sure if it's twenty-ninth, but come in Friday night, have our camp of instruction on Saturday, and then leave on Sunday morning. Uh, we're not having a battle, we're not doing anything wildly crazy, we just want to be able to, um, have the folks, as I said, be able to touch the horses, but we'll also do some drilling on the ground, because them being cavalry is different than what they would have done as Civil War infantry. Uh, there'll be both blue and gray groups there. Um, it's not a big, huge, we're not refighting the war, we're not doing anything political, it's people that like history that are trying to better their impressions. Um, we're, the public is, if the public's there walking through, they're welcome to watch us, they're welcome to talk to us. Um, we're not going to be doing any battles. Um, there'll probably be, I'm expecting probably four, maybe five horses. Um, all of us are insured through the Umbrella Group, uh, that we have, but I'm also looking to get a policy as well, naming us and the town as, you know, something really bad happens, we're all covered. Do you guys have any questions? I mean, we're looking, we're, we're gonna go to the police department, make sure that they obviously know that we're there and where we're gonna be. Uh, we're gonna get a permit from the fire department, because we're gonna have a couple of fires, not big huge bonfires, but cooking fires, um, that will have either buckets of water or, uh, fire extinguishers, you know, readily accessible. And like I said, the public's welcome to go through, we don't need to shut it all down. Uh, we just, we're looking for a place where we can go and do this. As you guys all know, Island Grove is an amazing place. Um, the arch is tied into the G A R, which is Civil War history. What better place?
Is your, are your intentions to stay the night at Island Grove?
That's correct, yep.
Okay. Scott, with that being said, I know recently, was it last year, that we, we voted to close the, uh, no entrance in our parks, or, or no entry for our parks at night? Would this be something we'd have to make a, make an allowance for, or?
Thought we'd just close the pool. But either way, that's why they're here, is to ask for permission.
That's what I thought, Tim.
Vote of four to one.
Solely that park.
Just that park.
This will be a vote to let them use the park.
That's why we're voting, to see if they can use it.
We didn't close all the parks, just the one.
All the park, yeah.
It's what's your pleasure, boys.
Yeah, do we need a?
Make a motion for, to grant permission for the use of Island Grove for the Civil War Camp for Instruction for Soldiers, April twenty-ninth and thirtieth.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Outstanding, thank you, gentlemen.
Good luck, have fun.
Thank you, Lloyd.
Number nine, vote to establish a designated school zone on Chestnut Street in front of Woodsdale. And we have a note that says, oh, do you know if it is? It is not.
No, uh, if it is, or if it isn't, we're not sure, but this is more belt and suspenders. DPW and, um, has received a grant that would allow them to put up, um, the flashing lights, the school zone lights, the yellow lights, and, um, they're, so, are they solar powered? I think they were. So, uh, but in order to get the grant and in order to install them, uh, it has to be designated a school safety zone by the Board of Selectmen, so.
Weird that that's never, never had that.
So would you say it probably was voted as school zone?
I couldn't find anything, but my guess is it seems to make sense that it would have been, but just in case if nobody.
Make a motion to establish designated school zone on Chestnut Street in front of the Woodsdale School.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you.
We have, um, still have an, one opening on the Open Space Committee, if anyone's into us. And now we will review the FY twenty-four operating budget and town meeting warrant.
Okay.
Mr. Town Manager.
So as you can see, I have our, our website up, so if anybody at home is looking for the warrant, um, click on our town meeting info, and you'll find our proposed budget, um, for next year, and the twenty-twenty-three proposed warrant. This one has the finance committee recommendations on it, but you'll also see that, uh, we have a sort of a summary underneath each one, just for anybody who is curious and wants to know the Reader's Digest version of each one of these warrant articles. Uh, so, um, I'll go down them. The snow and ice one, as you can see, that's a typical one that we see every year. Right now, it's tracking at two-hundred-and-sixty-four thousand. If nothing happens, um, that'll be nice, but that'll be our only, um, deficit for snow and ice, that's coming out of free cash. We have a payment of prior year's bill. Again, this is another one that we see every year, um, although we endeavor to make sure that all of our vendors get their bills to us on time, uh, by the end of June, June thirtieth, sometimes they don't, and we have to come to town meeting to, uh, request that the funds are, that it's paid. And that, again, comes from free cash. Uh, payment of sick leave buyback. This is, uh, some water department employees that are going to be retiring, and this is the, uh, the town's, um, the town of Abington's share. Uh, again, this comes out of their water receipts. This isn't not coming out of operating budget. Uh, the FY twenty-four operating budget, as you can see, and as I said, that, you know, we have that, um, on the website also. It was a difficult, uh, difficult budget this year, but we did get through it, we have a balanced budget. We do have, um, the ability to, as everybody is, seems to be excited about, we do have the ability to have a town planner. Um, it, you know, it was something that was proposed a couple, or probably three years ago, and unfortunately, because of the circumstances with the economy, we had to take it out of the budget, but I'm glad to say we finally got it back in. So that's probably the biggest enhancement on the budget. We do have a few other positions that we're, we're bringing back or reallocating, but for the most part, that is the, uh, the biggest new position. They were, you know, as we begin our, um, budget season every year, we do ask the department heads to come in and, and meet with the, um, Board of Selectmen and with the Finance Committee to explain what their needs are, um, to continue to, um, you know, provide a high level of service to the town. And they did all come in, and, and, and for the most part, um, we were able to take care of most of those needs. We, we did have a, um, a request from the DPW to add another, um, laborer position, which I think is desperately needed, and unfortunately, we're unable to do that this year, but we hope to bring that back next year. This does include, um, as we had mentioned earlier, three collective bargaining agreements that we were, um, really, really glad that we were able to get those finished and get those in there, too.
Scott, Scott, if I may just add, just to give a shout out to the planning board for, um, their tremendous advocacy to ha- for us to have a full-time town planner. Um, I think definitely their, their push for this is, it helped the Finance Committee, it helped our decision, helped you moving forward. And I know when you came on as a town manager, Scott, that was one thing, that was one of your priorities, to push for us as, you know, for the town of Abington to ha- to have a town planner. I think us having, and I, we, we have said, you know, having a town planner is going to be great for the town moving forward, not just for the, not just for next year, but, you know, five, ten, fifteen years from now. Um, to have a vision, to have someone help us, you know, set up what, what our vision is for the future for the town, where we want to, you know, put our priorities, um, and especially when it comes to the, uh, Southfield, uh, redevelopment authority, so someone who can help us with that. Uh, I think that's great. I know we had talked about before, you know, just having a consultant, um, but I think this is great that we have a concrete plan here to say, we are committed, uh, to having a town planner.
Hope we can find one now.
Yeah, well, I.
See that other towns can't.
Well, I know, Scott, you will, you and I had talked about this before, in, in conversations, that, um, you know, Rockland has been looking for a town planner. Uh, but the, uh, from what I gather, you and I were talking about, uh, in the Board of Selectmen in Rockland, that they were open to having a, a regional, uh.
Yeah.
A regional planner for both Abington and Rockland.
Yep, we're hoping to continue those, uh, that dialogue and those conversations. I think that together, we probably do have a better chance of, of, um, recruiting somebody who can handle both towns, and certainly, a lot of our interests, uh, are quite similar, so, um, you know, this is funded, it's funded at a good rate, and I think, um, you know, we're looking forward to moving forward on it.
And a huge shout out also to the Finance Committee, too, for fighting, advocating for this as well, so, thank you to Scott, to the Finance Committee, uh, and to the Planning Board, thank you.
Yeah, actually, I mean, there was outcry from a lot of boards, including this board, that, you know, that, um, that that was an important thing that they wanted to see. And, yeah, definitely a shout out to the Finance Committee in general for working with us through this whole budget process. It is a lot of work, um, and they meet quite often and for long hours to deal with it. So Article Five will be our capital plan. There is, for the most part, um, we, we had, uh, just over two million dollars in free cash this year, and free cash is, um, monies from last year that were, either they were, um, allocated for expenses for the departments, and they weren't, weren't fully expended, so it was returned back into the general fund, or, um, we exceeded our revenues and our revenue projections. So we were able to fund our capital plan that you see here, largely with free cash, uh, with the exception of, obviously, Water Department and Sewer Department uses their own retained earnings. And we do have a article on here for a fire department to purchase and equip a new ambulance, so there's a request to borrow for that. The current, uh, oldest ambulance is, is gonna have to be taken out of service relatively soon, and right now, uh, the lead time on a new ambulance is over a year. So we need to, um, get authorized to at least order it. We won't see the borrowing for probably a year or a year and a half.
Make sure we get a Chevy next time, too.
I hear the Chevy's the way to go. Let's see, Community Preservation has, um, their budget is Article Six. They have a lot of great programs this year. They'll do a presentation at town meeting to explain them all. Couple of other things, though, that was very important that, um, that we discussed here, and is our, uh, the Green Wave Connector Trail Design, which is, is part of, is, um, a plan that sort of connects our campus and, and ultimately, all the way across to Memorial Field, all the way over towards, um, Hancock and Orchard Lane, and, and down over to Ames Nolan eventually. So that's the sort of one of the first parts of that long-term plan, to get that together. Uh, we have an update of the Open Space and Recreation Plan. We've been trying to get funding for this for a couple of years now, so I'm glad that, um, that CPA is, is going to help us with that. We, we've been trying to get grants, but in, without having this plan updated and, um, submitted to the state, we're not eligible for a lot of other grant funding that will help.
So this will make us eligible?
This will make us eligible, correct. You can see that we have, uh, some money in here for the Island Grove Bridge Design. We're also helping, uh, hoping to get some grant money, and maybe not use all of this, but, uh, that, um, you'll see we have an article also at the end of this for historic preservation that will help us get the, that grant. Annual funding of student transportation, that is, um, again, it's in the annual article, separate from the school budget. It just authorized the town to pay for transportation services for Abington students who will be going other places like South Shore VOTAC or Norfolk Agricultural. Uh, health imperative funding in Arc of the South Shore, there are a couple of organizations that, um, that assist Abington residents for different types of needs. They're both very, um, well worthwhile, and I'm glad that, you know, we're able to continue assisting them.
And those figures haven't changed over the years.
No, they've not asked for more, they've always kind of asked for the same amount. The vacant land off of Central Street, um, the, um, this is a parcel of land that is just to the right of the police station, and, um, about one-point-four acres. If we go forward, uh, even if we don't go forward, but, um, this certainly would be great to have for, um, the police, uh, for the fire and DPW expansion. It's, just gives us access to the back area e- either way to where our DPW yard is. The land has been vacant and neglected for several years, so, um, we have put an offer out to the homeowner on this one, um, have not heard back yet, but, um, obviously, our intention is to, uh, purchase it or, uh, take it by eminent domain. Funding of the roadway infrastructure improvement project, this is a, sort of in, in, um, cooperation with the Plymouth County Commissioners. They are, um, they have approximately three million dollars in Recovery Plan Act money that they are holding and they have allocated to the town of Abington, uh, for us to use in a various amount of ways, and this is one way, a stormwater protection that we are allowed to, um, seek, sort of a, it, it's more of a, a grant from them. It's a reimbursement program, but, uh, this would, uh, you know, will take care of the replacement, repair, upgrade, and, uh, you know, regrading for the subsurface structures, um, you know, to, um, make sure that we have the roadways pitched properly, that we have, um, drainage basins that are working properly, and that we're doing our best for our stormwater management. And as you can see, the streets that, um, we've, um, looked at that are probably in the worst shape and, and in most need of this infrastructure repair were Chapel Street, Cliff Street, Lake Street, Wilson Place, Hershey Lane, Shaw Ave, and Washington Street from Adams to Bedford Street, and, uh, Bicknell Hill Road. And as you just heard, we have an article to accept Marshfield into the South Shore VOTAC District. The funding of the union contracts. We have the local option to allow veteran property tax work-off abatement program, and this will work, um, very similar to the way that the, um, the senior work-off program works, except, obviously, it's for veterans. Local option to establish designated safety zones, uh, this would, um, if you approve this article, this would, um, give the Board of Selectmen the ability to look at certain areas and, and designate them as thickly settled or i- in need of a, um, reduced speed limit. The current process now, uh, would require us to, um, have engineering review and then submit to Mass DOT for their, um, blessing, so to speak. Uh, there would be criteria, there's no streets in mind for this, actually, it's just, um, to give the tools to, um, the town to make these decisions, where I think that they're better suited than on, um, a state agency. This will not affect state roads in any way, this is only local town roads. We have a couple articles on mat- for matching grant funding. Um, the first one, sixteen thousand dollars, uh, provides a five percent match, so, um, we have over three-hundred thousand dollars in new radios, in new portable radios for the fire department. So obviously, a sixteen thousand dollars, um, to get three-hundred thousand dollars worth of equipment is a great bargain for the town. The other part, as, as we have talked about, is our, um, in our connectivity program to try and, um, make it, uh, just a, a better, an easier place to walk and, and ride bikes around town, and connect the downtown areas, connect Memorial Field and, and the, um, school areas. the downtown areas, connect Memorial Field and the school areas over to Glenowits and the town campus over here. There's this bike, a bike lane project, which the town had received or is in receipt of a $500,000 grant to do this work, but our town match on it would be $69,000 for the engineering and, you know, bidding and construction administration portion of it. Article 18 is our police department separation from civil service. This article was part of the negotiations with the Police Patrolmen's Union. They have agreed to this. Again, it's, it would protect any of the existing officers, or they would be grandfathered, so to speak, in any civil service protection or whatever that they currently have. So this would only affect new employees, and it probably won't go into effect right away. Then we get into zoning bylaws. Really, there's no new zoning proposed, so to speak. Most of these zoning bylaws are housekeeping and updating to, to come into compliance with our stormwater regulations, and there's some things in there, as you can see, for green roofs to help with stormwater management. And there's some language in here on preservation of tree canopy and replacement of trees, if you, you know, to try and give incentive to not just do clear cutting when you are developing a piece of property, and some requirements on, you know, having more of a variety of trees and trees that make sense. This is a really good article. Hopefully, we get a lot of folks out that we got out when we were buying that open space that are interested in seeing this one go through. And then the final one is the authorization of the preservation restriction on the Memorial Bridge at Island Grove. And again, this is just to, this is massive, massive story who we are going through for some grant money to help repair that. It's requiring us to put a preservation restriction on if they're going to give us any grant money to help repair the bridge. Obviously, the idea of the preservation restriction is more, as you can see, it's, you know, it's a concrete bridge with iron railing, so we would keep that so it would look the same as much as possible when we do restore it.
Were you asking our congressman for money for that also?
We are. We are actively asking everybody.
Anybody that will listen.
Yes. We actually, the CPA had allocated, I think, $40,000 at the last year's town meeting for a grant writer, and the grant writer has been very busy getting us through each phase of this, so.
Speaking of grants, I want to give a shout out to all the department heads. We, some of us were talking about the grants that we've received over the last several years, probably the last two or three years. I think it's more grants than we've ever received, probably combined.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, I know that was a priority of this board when you were hired, and this board has been asking you for grants. At one point, we thought we wanted to hire a grant writer, but as it turns out, I think things are working out great with our department heads, so shout out to all of them. Please.
With department heads, but Luchey spends probably 75 to 85% of her time working on either obtaining a grant, or once, many times, once we have a grant, there comes a lot of work with that grant.
Right.
To keep the grant.
Yeah.
And then we also have to, you know, we had a grant for our hazard mitigation plan, so the idea of updating a hazard mitigation plan is that once it's updated and accepted, then you're eligible for more grants.
Right.
Like the open space plan.
Exactly. So, yeah, so a lot of people I've talked to are very happy, and they're noticing what we're doing. So thank you, and thank you to the department and the board. So last item is always the most anticipated item on the agenda.
Anything there?
And, no, I didn't mean you. It's our town manager report.
So, yeah, mostly that's what we've been working on is that warrant and the budget. I do have a few items to chat about. We have received a, an opinion of probable cause for our fire department DPW facility. Right now, the projected cost for basically two complete projects and two complete buildings and facilities is $58,349,635. So now, you know, our next step is obviously, the committee is working hard to dial that number in on exactly what that means, and we'll get some information out at town meeting to let everybody know. I think that we'll be ready for a special town meeting in the fall to actually ask for funding for this. We'll have schematics by then. I'm assuming we'll have schema, we actually can get some schematics up relatively soon on the website, if they're not already up there. So, again, that's essentially, it's two complete projects. The breakdown of that was approximately $700 a square foot, and I've been told that Rockland, who's working on a similar project, but it's only a fire department part, their, their project is, is getting estimated somewhere around $800 a square foot. So the numbers are realistic, you know. I think if you went back 15 years or 10 years, you're probably looking at $550 and $600 a square foot. So it's, it actually isn't very out of whack. But again, we'll have some more information at town meeting for anybody who's interested, not during the meeting, but there'll be a table up front that will have some information on it. I will give a, you know, a quick update and let people know where the, where the committee's at. But they've come a long way. There's been a lot of work, and I'd like to thank Kim and Donovan and obviously Derek Amati for all the work that they've done to get us to this point, and they have a lot more to do. We did get a message. I got an email from John Stone. So when he met with us a few weeks back, he had mentioned the, the most dangerous intersection in town. The, it is the Route 139, Chestnut Street, Old Randolph intersection. So the state is funding $4 million for that, and they did move it up, so he wasn't sure exactly. He was thinking it was going to be somewhere in the federal fiscal year '28, but it looks like it's going to be at least a year earlier, so.
Nice.
That is good news. Just a shout out to Lindsay White, our public health nurse. She was actually recently invited through FEMA to go do some training down in Inneston, Alabama, for the Center for Domestic Preparedness. So as we have discussed, I've asked Lindsay to help us coordinate and be our emergency management sort of coordinator, not director, and come up with some plans. And this was actually really a good scenario that they actually put her through down there for these five days of training, where they were working on, and just one of the scenarios out of the many was training on responding to, you know, what do you do if there's a, some sort of hazardous material or hazardous waste gets into your water system, and how do you deal with messaging that and obviously responding to it? It was, it sounds like it was pretty in-depth. By invite only, you had to have a certain level of credentials that Lindsay has. The nice part is it was fully funded through FEMA and a FEMA grant, so. Thank you to Lindsay for that. We did have, I had a legislative update with the Mass Municipal Association today. They do have several articles that I would recommend that we, you know, reach out to our legislative delegation to make sure that we let them know we're fully in support of them. They are looking for people to sign on to many of these still. One is a, there is an act out there creating a municipal and public safety building authority, and this one actually has a lot of legs right now, that would assist us and help work a lot like the MSBA works. But it would be for town, town municipal buildings and public safety buildings, which, you know, it'd be really good if they can get that up and running by maybe the end of the year. Can't see it happening, but. There are a couple out there. There's one on an act to allow cities and towns to increase the local tax rate on meals. So currently, we have the local tax of .75 cents. It would allow us by local option to raise it yet again. I don't know that that's something that we'd want to do, but I think it might be something that would be worth looking into what the bill is proposing. There is a couple of bills out there for, to modernize the municipal meetings and town meetings. So again, it's, we are going to get carried over for another two years, I believe, on, on certain things, including the hybrid meetings. But they still, there's a bill they're trying to make it permanent. But I believe on the governor's desk right now is that bill just to continue to extend the hybrid meetings, and they continue and extend the outdoor dining by local authority, and even the drinks to go. So those are kind of the big ones that I think that we should probably be, oh, well, there's the act relative to civil service also. So they are looking to make it an easier, you know, local option to leave civil service instead of kind of go through what we're going through. One last one that I think is very important. An act relative to municipal authority and public rights away. So what they're trying to do is find a way that we would have the authority to force the utility companies to take down the second telephone poles if they keep leaving the abandoned poles up. And not only, if they don't take them down, then we would have the ability to go and do it.
And wires, too, right?
And charge them.
Yeah.
All of their, all of their abandoned stuff.
Look at North Abington.
Yeah. So that's it. That's all I have for you.
I'd just like to point out that there is going to be a second meeting for Union Point on Wednesday night at Union Point, and I just thought of it, so I don't have all the details here. I believe the meeting will start at 7:00. Alex, do you remember?
Yes, so the.
The name of the building?
So on Wednesday, it will be at 7:00 PM in Farring Way. That's the building.
Farring, right.
It's 25 Stonehaven Drive.
And it's the second floor.
Yes.
So if anyone's interested in that. And this will be the, more of the zoning.
Correct.
Part of it. Alex and I both attended the last meeting.
Yeah.
And we will be there. I will be there Wednesday night.
I will be too. Yeah, no, it was, it was very, very informative, and it's, it sounds like Brookfield Developments and New England Development are really moving in the right direction when it comes to Union Point and, you know, Southfield.
So what they will do is they'll go over the zoning. It's really for the board. Last month was the overall plan, two weeks ago, and this week will be the zoning for the board to approve, and then they will meet with the three towns, and there'll be several public hearings.
Yes.
In the towns, and I think they expect to go to our town meeting next.
Correct. Yeah, so they're looking to come to our town, our special town, our special.
Even in the fall.
Yeah, in the fall.
Yeah, I think the fall they want to come to.
According to their schedule, they were looking at for our special town meeting.
Right, yeah. So I think.
But, you know, they've, when we went on that walkthrough of our property, of Abington's property, they committed to doing public hearings in Abington and stuff like that.
Right.
So I've, Scott, I've CC'd, maybe having a hearing like at the Senior Center or something. And I've reached out to the Senior Center, the Council on Aging Director, and she seems open to it.
Okay.
So you'll hear a lot more about it before town meeting, anyway.
Correct.
But I urge anyone that's interested to go to the meeting on Wednesday night. Is there anything else?
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Don't rush into it. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, you're next.